Called order the Paintsville City Council Regular Meeting, Monday, July 10th, 2017. Chief, place of allegiance, please.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you, Chief.
Cork, would you call the roll, please?
Tim.
President.
Tom.
Yes, ma'am.
Patricia.
President.
Jim.
Mayor.
Sarah.
Here.
Justin.
Here.
Announcements by the Mayor. Mr. Blazer. This young man took it upon himself to clean the plaza up after the Fourth of July, is that correct? And you had to go into your mother's workplace and ask for garbage bags, correct? You take me back to the old days. And, young man, we are extremely proud of you as a council, and myself as a mayor, and we would like to present you this certificate for distinguished community service, Mr. William Blazer.[101.11][101.11](applause) Yes, we do need more like that. And, Mr. Gary McClure, can I read this off, please? So, this is gonna happen, correct?
Yes.
Couldn't find you there, in your glasses. On behalf of Governor Matt Bevin and the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, the Kentucky 911 Services Board is pleased to announce a grant in the amount of $98,199,000 has been awarded to the city of Paintsville as part of the 2017 competitive grant cycle for the following 911 call center project, and I'm assuming that's to upgrade the radio side of dispatch, correct?
That is correct.[173.12][173.12](applause)
And, we would like to wish good luck to both Paintsville Little League All-Star teams, the Nine and Tens, the Eleven and Twelves. They will be going to the state tournament starting this weekend, so let's all be rooting for those young men, and hopefully they can be as good a hitter as what I was when I was in Little League and hit a few home runs or whatever.
Wow.
Wow.[204.73][204.73](laughter)
He was several semesters behind us.
Several semesters. Yeah.
(inaudible)
Well, just a couple, Jim.
(inaudible)
Couple there.
You ain't too, you almost kicked it.
Yeah, well, I will catch you for it, too, huh? Uh, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need approval of departmental reports, please.
(inaudible).
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I moved my thing.
(laugh) I need a motion to pay the bills as presented.
Make the motion, pay the bills as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
And moving on to business, I need approval from council for me to sign a loan application for the purchase of the new greens mower, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion, second.
Who did that?
Second. How much is it, Bill McCallum?
How much was it? $19,000.
I take this God's portion.
Yes.
If I could use it at the farm, I would.
If I could use it at the house, I would. All in favor?
Aye.
I also need an approval, Ms. Verge, and you can help me along with this if you want to, we have to update our Code of Ordinances book, is that correct?
That's right. It's been at least two years since it's been updated.
She said it's been two years since we upgraded our ordinance book, so we probably need to get that done. The cost here, it says, is gonna be between $1,500 to $2,100 for the main editing work, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And there may be an additional $175 to $225 for the Folio Web Update Editing.
Make motion?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, Ms. Verge, where's the proclamation? So, does council have to vote on this, or we just making a proclamation?
You're just one of them.
This is you.
Are you gonna read it?
You want me to?
Yeah, you can read that. This is a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month.
This is proclamation by the Mayor of the city of Paintsville. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Paintsville, whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, whereas parks and recreation program build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation activities for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs provide or increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, whereas parks and natural recreation areas provide water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Paintsville recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore being resolved by the city of Paintsville that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Paintsville, Kentucky.
So, we don't need to vote on that, correct?
No. It's just a month.
And then item number four, we have the first reading to an amendment to the Property Maintenance Code.
And as an explanation, this is an amendment that's in conjunction with the next item, which is the ordinance creating the Code Enforcement Board and various procedures and establishment of the civil fines that had previously been included in this ordinance, so we're going to repeal two sections because they were picked up in the new Code Enforcement Board ordinance. So, this first ordinance is being amended, it's an amendment to the current Code of Ordinances Land Usage/Property Maintenance Code, and it is a repealing of Section 155.03, which is the schedule of civil fines, and a repealing of Section 155.04, which is the lien ordinance, as well as repealing Section 155.05, an inspection fee. Again, those sections are repealed, and the new sections with similar provisions are picked up in the next one, if that makes sense.
So, can we go ahead and pass both of those, number, or do you have to go over number five also?
I'll have to go over the next one.
So, we need a vote on the first reading of the Property Maintenance Code.
So, no, this is the Code Enforcement?
Code Enforcement.
Yes.
For the city?
Yes.
And we have to establish that we've got a board?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. And this, and this ordinance is just being amended to repeal those sections that were already in an ordinance, so that we pick it up on the full Code Enforcement Board.
Okay, yeah.
Can we, can we check, once we do that, can we amend those, those fines and so forth?
Yeah, that's part of...
That's what we're doing, then, right?
Go ahead.
So, we can go ahead, 'cause we're trying to get a little more enforcement.
We got some teeth.
That's what I thought.
State law, over the past two years, state law has been completely redone on this, and it's streamlined various sections to allow the city to enforce ordinances with regard to property maintenance and to have an easier process in place to have the fines enforced, and then go forward and file the liens from there.
There any state statutes that limit this on that? I mean, they...
Yeah, this is all done in accordance with state statute.
Okay.
So, we just need a motion and a second for this reading here?
Correct.
I'll make a motion for the Property Maintenance Code.
I second.
Okay, then item number five would be the first reading of the Code Enforcement Board.
Right, and this is the new ordinance on the Code Enforcement Board, whereas it is the intent of KRS 65.8801 to KRS Section 65.8839 to protect, promote, and improve the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens residing within the city by authorizing the creation of an administrative board with the authority to issue remedial orders and impose fines in order to provide an equitable, expeditious, effective, and inexpensive method of ensuring compliance with the ordinances enforced within the city, and whereas it is the desire of the city council, the city of Paintsville, Kentucky, to utilize the authority granted in KRS Section 65.8801 to Section 65.8839 by creating a city of Paintsville Code Enforcement Board, now therefore being ordained by the city council, the city of Paintsville, as follows. Section 1 just sets forth definitions of the various terms that are used throughout the ordinance. Section 2, creation of membership, hereby created within the city pursuant to applicable state statute, a Code Enforcement Board, which shall be, which shall be composed of five members, all of whom are residents of the city for a period of at least one year prior to their appointment, and shall reside there throughout the term of office. The enforcement powers are set forth in Section 3, the Code Enforcement Board shall have the power to issue remedial orders and impose civil fines as a method of enforcing city ordinances when a violation of the ordinance has been classified as a civil offense. That section goes on to expressly state that the Code Enforcement Board shall not have the authority to enforce any ordinances regulating conduct, which also would, under the provisions of any state law, constitute a criminal offense or a moving motor vehicle offense. Section 4 sets forth the appointments of the board, that sets forth a staggered term, one of five will be for one year, two of five will be for two years, and then two will be for three years, and then, so that way it'll pick up, and then thereafter, each term will be three years. It sets up a stagger, so they're not all coming out at the same time. Section 5 sets forth the organization of the board and the meetings, and we've left blank of the day of the month that they'll meet, and we'll have to figure out when you wanna do that, and put that into the second reading.
Okay.
Uh, Section 7 sets forth the powers of the Code Enforcement Board. The city of Paintsville Code Enforcement Board shall have the following powers and duties, A, to adopt rules and regulations to govern its operations and conduct of hearings, B, to conduct hearings to determine if there has been a violation of an ordinance over which it has jurisdiction, C, to subpoena alleged violators, witnesses, and evidence to its hearings. Subpoenas issued by the Code Enforcement Board may be served by any code enforcement officer, D, to take testimony under oath. The chairman shall have the authority to administer oaths for the purpose of taking testimony, E, to make findings of fact and issue orders necessary to remedy any violation of a city ordinance, and F, to impose civil fines as authorized on any person found who has violated an ordinance over which the board has jurisdiction. The enforcement proceedings are set forth. Essentially, you have an enforcement, code enforcement officer currently, Mr. Stewart, would issue a citation, there's a time provided for which the alleged violator could contest the citation and request a hearing, then we have the procedure for hearings set forth. If the, upon the hearing and the taking of evidence, the board shall issue a final order, which then can be appealed to the Johnson District Court within 30 days. We have the Section 12 sets forth the fines, and this is, there's a section for fines that are not contested, and then the second section sets forth the contested fines, that's all pursuant to state statute. Section 13 sets forth the lien, which can be assessed against the property in the event of the fine that's not paid. There's a lien holder notification system that sets forth that any lien holder, a bank or any mortgage holder, anybody that has a lien against property can register to be given notice of any lien against the property that they're holding the lien against, and the lien holder can pay the fines. So, that way, they're gonna be ultimately responsible, they can go ahead and pay any costs assessed against it. And then Section 15 just sets forth the lien, the city's right to have a lien against the property of any unpaid fines, and that's the Code Enforcement Board's summary.
So, we need a, just a motion and a second for this, correct?
Right, right. No vote.
I'll make the motion, we can sit for the first reading of the Code Enforcement Board ordinance.
Okay, are you good?
Did I get a second?
Yeah, from Sarah. Sarah gave you a second.
(inaudible)
Then, and this procedure gets put in place, and there's a violation, the notice gets sent, they have the right to contest it or move forward.
What about a ban of property?
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing, yeah, it'd be the same thing. So, is it legal for me to ask the council how quick they can come to a special call?
Sure.
So, how quick can you come to a special call, since the media's here already, to get these two things done for the second readings?
What time's this meeting over?
We gotta give them 24 hours.
Couple days.
I couldn't wait tomorrow for me.
I can't win, but, but, any other time, I can't, I don't wait for the year to go.
I should see you three playing golf about 2:00, 2:30.
I can't Friday.
Probably working in.
The next week, Jim.
So, let me put it this way.
I'm Thursday, I'm fine.
He's good Thursday.
Okay, let me put it this way, so I can talk to you all after the meeting's over, and we can get worked out what we need to do, right?
Yeah.
That'll work, that'll work. Okay, we, we've had a problem in this city, and Mr. Lewandowski can attest to it, when you cleaned the, underneath the bridge, Veterans Bridge, could you relay to the audience exactly how many needles that you picked up?
We put down 13 needles, and we found plastic bottles with waxes in on it, you know, to, I guess, for them to heat it, paraphernalia, also in the other places we cleaned up, you know, we go over the, by the swimming pool, along that back field, and I guess, tons of needles out there, I mean, we have a big needle problem here. You walk around a big loop, people just throw them out their cars or laying on the side of the road, we need, or just, you know, it's just too many needles. We gotta do something about it.
Okay, we, we have Ms. Julie Bush with us tonight, but now she, she's not gonna give a presentation. There's a resolution in front of me that I'm assuming, Mrs. Bush, that we have to just adopt a resolution, and then, once we adopt it as a city council, then it would go in front of fiscal court, is that correct?
So, according to the way that the law is written, it has to be approved by the county board of health, the city government in which the program operates, as well as the county government. And it passed the Johnson County Board of Health in October of 2016.
Okay.
So, if city council passes it tonight, then it goes before the fiscal court, before it can be in operation.
Okay, and this is simply a needle exchange program to where that the people that use these needles won't leave them lay, they would come to the health department and exchange them for new needles, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, this is a resolution, and I really don't wanna read all of it to you, but...
Well, I guess, there's a whole lot of "whereas" is setting forth the reasons why it's necessary. Setting forth the... I understand why it's necessary, it's just sad.
Hep C's the most important.
And then, the, setting forth the CDC findings, the health department's findings concerning the problems with intervening in drug use and various things, and then the "now therefore being resolved," that the Paintsville City Council believes that a syringe access exchange program would reduce the risk of spreading infectious diseases through the availability of sterile drug injection equipment for the above stated reasons, and let it further, let it be further resolved pursuant to the newly amended KRS Section 218A .500, subsection 5, subsection B. The Paintsville City Council does hereby adopt this resolution and improve the development of a syringe access exchange program in Johnson County by the Johnson County Health Department to prevent and control the spread of communicable diseases associated with injection drug use, and in so doing, advance public safety of Johnson County. That's the resolution.
Now, I know this is somewhat controversial, I understand it, I was raised a Baptist boy, so...
The only, the only thing about, I think, and I'm pretty sure I'm right about this, and I'm not speaking off my butt, but, about the hepatitis problem, because hepatitis C is worse in Kentucky than anywhere else.
Right.
Number one in Kentucky is hepatitis C. And the thing about it is, it's kind of like when the AIDS thing first started, and I told my son, when he would go on a trip, and he was an adult, he was 20 years old, but still, you know, you know pretty much where you might have been, but you don't know where somebody you meet might have been.
Right.
And you may have a child that gets involved with someone that may not even do that anymore, but they still have hepatitis C and don't know it.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, that's what's so bad about it, and I know what Tommy's saying about that. In like you, people are saying, well, we shouldn't have to, we shouldn't be providing clean needles to these, but the thing about it is, they may, they may get it from someone else, and then you have an epidemic of it, and we already have an epidemic of hepatitis C in Kentucky, and I had a scare in my family, and it is a scary prospect when you have young children.
I just don't want our, when we're kids in that neighborhood, coming in and stuff, going and playing with it, getting hepatitis C, and then it's on us.
Well, you take a little boy going fishing down to Paint Creek, and all of a sudden he slips and falls on a dirty needle, and he gets stuck, then all of a sudden he's got CB or HIV.
Well, that's something that's bigger than us, yeah, it's a community problem.
I'm for it, but I just don't agree with the name of it, the needle exchange, I mean, that's rather than you like, have a type, have a type of C prevention program, I mean, something other than needle exchange, it sounds dirty.
And it sounds like we're contributing to the legitimacy of people doing that, and we're not.
Syringe exchange.
Syringe exchange.
Actually, we just did needle exchange so people would know what we're talking about. At the end of our, we use the term harm reduction, because we're not just looking to exchange needles, we're also doing Hep C testing, HIV testing, pregnancy testing, all those things can be done as a harm reduction campaign, except when we say harm reduction.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I like that.
See, I knew it wouldn't take you long to chip in.[1447.00][1447.00](laughter)
Jennifer wasn't awesome from the health department.
I'm just curious where we are, and where the other communities are, have they already adopted this?
I have no idea.
A lot of them.
I'm just curious.
Five, four has.
And they already have?
Five, four has.
Okay, I just, I'm just curious, I figured they have, but I just wanted to know.
So, what do we need, Mr. Baldwin, we need a first, a second, and a vote?
Yep.
Make the motion, we had the needle exchange program.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sad that you have to do that.
It is sad you have to do it, but sometimes you gotta do things, I mean, that's just the way...
No families from you, I'm telling you that.
Ashwin got, first in the morning, Ashwin got a bad dose of heroin in, and they had nine overdoses in about three hours, and one was fatal. So, it's sad, it really is.
Yeah, it's all right.
Okay, the next two items on the agenda, we've got presentation, one from Air Methods Healthcare, and one from Air Med Care, so, we're not gonna take any, any action on these tonight, they're just gonna give presentations to us, if you don't mind.
Even though Tom...
Who's first? Air Methods Healthcare? Air Methods Healthcare going once, going twice?
Sold to the man in the blue shirt.
Sold to the man in the blue shirt. Uh, Air Med Care?
I'm Al Baldwin, I did a presentation a few months back, and I'm gonna keep it for us later. So, what this encompasses is if the city gets a site plan, all the residents that live within the city limits, it's on other jobs in the county, and never incur any bills for the plot. Average bill is $23,000, I've never seen that, it's always been more. Last year alone, we blew $22,000, Johnson County, that's over $500,000. Just one person in your city, or a city employer, anybody that would get phoned out and pay for the whole year, so, Adam Dixon, when he was shot in Pressburg, police officers removed him out. The city of Pressburg has it, they believed in it, they just renewed it. City of Allen has it, they just renewed it. Our apartment has it, they just renewed it. So, this is not somebody say, well, we'll get it, we'll try. Everybody that I've talked to in our area, we're not, I'm not, that they ever renewed the claim, because I believe that they've seen a neighbor or friend, I mean, somebody knows them phoned out in this area, and we do request that, you know, that you can say to that again, last time it seemed like it was paused it, but we would like to have about some time to confirm that. We're able to spread that out over two months, but, for one time, no payment, haven't spread that out individually, no interest paid. Today that you sign this, it's just a voluntary agreement. Today you sign this, you're covered, and you hand this to me back, somebody gets phoned out the next day in your city limits, or a person you know, they're gonna be covered. I had it myself before I started, and, I mean, it's, I don't mind buying it, that's not the way I'd have them phoned out. It's unfortunate that it is not, but we have it sealed, and you keep our base strong. Our base is moving to Stone Crest, it gets as close to the trauma center and closer to the...
Let everybody look at it, please.
Come, it just gets as close to Poplin and the trauma center.
Do you mind, before you leave, as giving council, like, an agreement of...
Sure will, then I'll give you, when you come, it just shows a tussle in that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open it up to council, let me tell you something, Mr. Blazer, I am proud of you.
I am too. That's astonishing.
It takes a special young man to do what you did.
Did you just, just want to do that, if it's just something, a needle you saw when you did it?
I guess, I was at her work when I pulled apart while I saw it.
Is he here?
I thought I, it's great, he's here. Probably ain't come in.
I wish there were more.
I wish we could do more for you.
Yeah.
You play golf? You wanna watch? I'd say it's the people on the plaza, they'd like to have two or three more like you. They would have to work, get the girls.
But, now buddy, we're proud of you.
Your parents got a lot to be proud of.
Yeah, they got a lot to be proud of.
Fine young man.
All right, we've got one thing that wasn't on the agenda, and I know it's hot in here, and I...
You're pulling a coke spill my tongue in hot, hot gin, that's all right.
Yes.
Tell one old Jake Mayo said when he played in the...
Oh, God, I can't tell him that, not in open council, but if I had players like that boy right there, the effort he gave, we'd win every time, yeah. All right, Mr. Baldwin, we got a, something that wasn't on the agenda, correct?
That's my understanding.
From utilities?
A requested ordinance for bond issuance, correct?
Correct.
And I'll read a summary here, and Mr. Pack can explain exactly what it's for. It's an ordinance, the city of Paintsville, Kentucky, authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of $4,900,000 principal amount of City of Paintsville Combined Utilities Revenue Bonds, Series 2018, for the purpose of financing the cost, not otherwise provided, of the construction of extensions, additions, and improvements to the existing water sewer and... of extensions, additions, and improvements to the existing water sewer and gas system of said city, setting for terms and conditions upon which said bonds may be issued in outstanding, providing for the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said water sewer and gas system, and providing for an advertised, public competitive sale of said bonds, as required by KRS eight three eight point oh six nine A. Ordinance bearing the above title is given first reading, and this is the first reading, here's a summary of the ordinance as prepared, I'm assuming by the bond attorney. Said ordinance authorizes the issuance of four million, nine hundred thousand dollars of city of Paintsville combined utilities revenue bonds, series two thousand eighteen, for the purpose of financing the cost, not otherwise provided, of the construction of the project referred to in the title just read, authorizes interim financing to pay the cost of said project pending the issuance of the bonds, designates the depository bank for the proceeds of the bonds and the certain funds to be maintained in connection with the bonds, provides for a sinking fund for the payment of principal and interest on the bonds, an operation and maintenance fund, and a depreciation fund, provides that said bonds are secured by a pledge of the gross revenue of the system, establishes the method of payment of the principal and of the interest on the bonds, and the conditions and restrictions for the issuance of bonds ranking on a parity with the bonds, provides certain covenants of the city for the further protection of the holders of the bonds, including covenants as to the compliance with the Internal Revenue Code, and prescribes terms and conditions upon which bids will be received for the purchase of the bonds. A copy of the full text of said ordinance is available for public inspection during regular business hours Monday through Friday at the city hall.
So can we have a discussion of that before we actually get a first and a second?
Is this the eye and eye project?
This is the eye and eye project, we're trying to separate the storm sewer from the sanitary, colored downtown area, in an effort to address all capacity issues of the Paintsville baseball.
Jim, did you have anything you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, but I was.
You going to wait on me?
No, I go ahead.
Go ahead.
I brought this issue over, and I've talked to a couple council members about this, and, uh, where do you stand on the utility going to Taze Branch? Now, are we, are we started out there yet?
We're about, about started yet, it was just water lines that get in the ground.
Yeah, but you not started, I'm glad.
Division of Water had concerns regarding our capacity plan, we've been working on for some time now, trying to get past those. Friday morning, I was letting me get back through to the chief engineer, and if I have any head that's going to approve these permits. And the commission meeting I just came from, the commission did, so the work contract, it goes to public attention.
Okay, that goes back, that narrative goes on to what I'm going to suggest here, okay, which I've suggested is before, I really strongly feel like this city council body needs to be in control of the place we utilities, since we own it, and I think we need to, to take it over, and the city council, do, do what they do, and that way we know exactly what's going on, instead of, you know.
Talking for.
What they're telling us, okay, showing us, okay, and I've said that for years, so, and I still am going back to that now, and I still say, I suggest that we seriously consider.
I think what Jim is saying is, the city of Pikeville has absolutely passed us up by leaps and bounds. Their mayor contracts their utilities out, correct? Am I correct when I say that? Now, you can call me a liar if you want to.
The city of Pikeville, I'm not sure about mountain, mountain utilities, then I think I'm able to just change that.
Okay, but here's the thing.
The city of Pikeville does contract out, UMG has their contract, everything from cutting weeds to sewer to water.
Okay, but here's the thing, I talked to that mayor the other day, and if he wants infrastructure run two miles to a strip mine to put an industrial park in, he gets it done in three weeks. We've been since nineteen ninety-one getting lines up Taze Branch, and I'm telling you right now, Taze Branch is a gold mine for the city of Paintsville. Now, what, what, what does that tell you?
Well, in Paintsville, they contract out the utilities, they have this control.
If this is something beyond the scope of what his utilities equipped to do, larger equipment, more men, specialized equipment.
Sorry, again, I think we'd be in more control, like you say, Bill Michael, what we want done, you know what I mean?
Jim, look here.
We've had a resolution in April, right, that's May, June, July, that's three months. Pikeville mayor said, hey, you go put a mayor out there, line over there, it can frame, I mean, they're going to hone this up.
I think the issue is with the capacity for playing.
Like I said, if it was just water, it'd be on the ground.
Yeah, but who caused that problem? I know the city of Paintsville didn't cause that problem.
The capacity problem?
Yeah.
That's why they were putting the ground back, way back.
But how come it was let go for years and years and years and years and years?
Again, I said, we promised to play, and we did that school, but I can't address how that.
We've. Mister. Yeah, Mr. Pack, we fully understand that, all we're saying is, for us to move forward as a city, we have to be able to get infrastructure ran where we need it ran in a
Timely manner.
A timely manner. We, we have to.
What's, how do we go about doing that, if the city council's in agreement to do, to do that? How, how much, I know that's a big deal, or?
Well, I mean, you've got ordinances in place right now that creates a utility commission that runs the day-to-day operations of, of your utilities. I mean, I really don't know what you're talking about, other than doing away with a commission, and I don't know, how you want to run the day-to-day operations? Well, I mean, but you've got, well, but you've got a board in place.
That we would be.
Why can't the city council be the commanding control for the decisions for the water company like Pikeville?
There's no reason you couldn't.
It used to be.
Well, we're not talking about making that kind of move, we're just.
You're talking about a big operation, means.
I think what we're saying is, is that we, as a council and as a city, is stymied, when you all come to us and ask for, what, four point? Four point nine million dollars, we have to approve, we have to approve that, but yet whatever money you take in, we don't have access to.
And we don't have say-so.
And we don't have any say-so.
We don't, we don't know what, what we're showing them, I mean, we don't have, we don't actually.
I think that's what this council's saying, so, but anyway.
We could come to the maintenance if we wanted to, I know that, but we don't feel welcome, and, and it's like you're all running your, your business, and we're running our business, but actually, it's the same business. But we can't, it's our, the citizens' business.
Well, they're called Paintsville Utilities, is what they're called. So, that's the way I see it, so do we need a motion and a second for this, correct?
Yes, for this bond issuance.
First reading.
Yes, first reading, so it would just be a, it would be a roll call vote, not vote on it, it's just first reading. It's like any ordinance, just read it twice, vote on it a second time.
So this is just first reading, correct? So I need a motion and a second for the first reading?
I make the motion.
Yeah, I second, it has to be.
It's got to be done?
It has to be done?
You're going to have to.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, it has to be done.
Yes, I know. Along with it, I'm assuming, Mr. Pack, is interim financing resolution and the municipal floodplain order, is that required as well for this bond issuance? So there's an interim financing resolution, a resolution of the city of Paintsville, Kentucky approving and authorizing a loan agreement with Kentucky Rural Water Finance Corporation. This is my first reading of this, so here it is, you're getting it, my first reading, whereas the city council of the city of Paintsville, Kentucky has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire and construct certain facilities and improvements of the city, of the governmental agencies combined and consolidated water sewer and gas system. Is this the eye and eye as well? Whereas governmental agency desires the Kentucky Rural Water Finance Corporation to act as its agency and instrumentality for the purpose of providing monies to construct the project, and has made an application to the corporation therefore, whereas in order to obtain such monies, the governmental agency is required to enter into a loan agreement with the corporation. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing authority of the city of Paintsville, Kentucky as follows, section one, that the governing authority hereby requests to the interim lender to act as its agency and instrumentality in obtaining interim financing, and hereby approves and authorizes the loan agreement between the governmental agency and the interim lender substantially in the form on file with the governmental agency for the purpose of providing the necessary financing to the governmental agency for the project and the loan note from the governmental agency to the corporation in the amount not to exceed four million, nine hundred thousand, and any modifications, extensions, or substitutions for the loan agreement and the loan note in the event needed to refinance the obligations incurred by the governmental agency thereunder. Section two, that any officer of the governmental agency being hereby is authorized, directed, and empowered to execute necessary documents or agreements, and otherwise act on behalf of governmental agency to effect such financing. And section three, that this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time provided by law. And I'm assuming that's just until you get the bonds issued, you have a interim financing.
So I need a motion and a second for that one also?
You need to vote on the resolution, we'll agree it one time.
Motion.
Second.
And then vote on it.
You need to vote on that one?
Yeah.
A roll call vote?
Sure.
Mr. Vergie?
Roll call voting.
Mr. Baldwin said we need the roll call vote.
Might as well go ahead and do it on the interim financing resolution.
Tim?
Yes, ma'am.
Tom?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Say it right. Josh too?
And then there's a municipal flood.
Got another one?
Mark, do you need this floodplain order as well? Okay, this is municipal order of the city of Paintsville, Kentucky regarding the service of future customers building structures in a designated floodplain. Whereas the city council, city of Paintsville, Kentucky is in the process of arranging to finance the construction of improvements to the existing water sewer and gas system. Whereas the United States Department of Agriculture, acting through Rural Development, has agreed to purchase a bond issued of the city designated as city of Paintsville Combined Utilities Revenue Bonds, series two thousand eighteen. Whereas RD has issued a letter of conditions to the city which sets forth requirements the city must meet in order for RD to purchase the bonds. Whereas the letter of conditions requires the city to adopt an order specifying that the city will deny water service to a future customer who builds a structure in a designated floodplain. Or in the alternative, the customer must, the customer must provide evidence and a justification for approval by the city that there are no other alternatives to construction or development within the designated floodplain. Now therefore, the city council, city of Paintsville, is hereby ordered as follows, one floodplain restriction that pursuant to the letter of conditions, the city hereby agrees that it will deny water service to any future customer who builds a structure in a designated floodplain, or in the alternative, such customer must provide evidence and a justification for approval by the city that there are no other alternatives to construction or development within the designated floodplain. The city must be a participant in the national flood insurance program, and the customer or developer must obtain the required permits prior to the tap-on restrictions being waived. Section two, severability, that if any clause, provision, paragraph, or section of this order be ruled void or unenforceable, manning court, the remainder thereof intended to be adopted shall be in full force and effect, and then all former provisions in conflict or appeal.
So what happens if we have the meeting, and we, we by chance get our floodplain, for the city of Paintsville changed a little bit, what happens if, if, if we go ahead and pass that?
It's just saying that nobody building in the floodplain can be granted a tap-on unless they prove that it's.
But that's the entire city practically.
That's right, yeah, we can't, that thing about to go anywhere. Can you, can you get a building permit now if you're not elevating up out of the floodplain?
Well, I'm going to tell you what I'm going to recommend on this one.
It has to be built up.
It has to be built up.
Right.
I'm going, I'm going to recommend on this one not to vote on it tonight. I think it needs to be tabled. Well, you got my recommendation.
I think that, I think that's shooting.
I think you're shooting yourself in the foot.
I really do.
Because it stands right now, first of all, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to elevate up out of the floodplain before you can build.
One foot of bad, I believe.
I'm elevated up out of the floodplain, that's good, still pay flooding, still pay flooding.
Me too. I did too.
The whole lot. Paying flood insurance, and I'm elevated out of it.
I, I paid it for thirty years.
My reading of this, as far as, and I don't know, I haven't had any discussions all day.
Well.
But my, my reading of this is that it's saying that if a prospective customer builds some new structure in a floodplain, they can't get tapped on, I don't think it's going to affect anything that's existing, this is just, this is just about if, if there's a new structure in the floodplain, they can't get tapped on until they show justification for approval of the tap-in.
Okay, we still have to do the second reading to do that.
Well, this is just, this is an order, this isn't an ordinance, so you don't have to read it twice, this is just a one-time, you approve it, it's, it's in effect.
I mean, it's just the government's way of paying for all the flooding in New Orleans and these places.
Look here, I am going, I am going to recommend, as your mayor, that you table that.
I've already made the most, I've already made the most, he made the most and I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You need to, I, I recommend that you have some discussion with Rural Development, whoever your contact is on this project, and let them explain and see what you can do with this, I, I don't know what else to do, but, you know, just talk to RD, because apparently it's their requirement, right? We need to hash it out with them and see what you, what you want to do.
I think we got a meeting coming up, what, miss, Thursday? To try and get something done, of course, not, not every city council member can be there, obviously you'd have a quorum if you were, but I think we got one coming up Thursday, don't we? Okay, we're going to open it up to council.
Good, I have three questions.
All right.
First of all, I'd like to do a shout-out to the Paintsville Fire Department for containing the fire to just one apartment on Lincoln Avenue, and not let it spread to the other five or six apartments in that building over there. So that needs a big shout-out to them. Second of all, the abandoned homes on the south side. We definitely need to do something about those homes over there.
I agree totally.
I don't know, we need to find out, if somebody's paying taxes on them, if they're not paying taxes, we need to file a lien against it and tear them down. Whatever we have to do legally, they need to come down.
That's the reason I was asking for the special call meeting as quick as we could, if we could get these ordinances through the second reading, then we could move a little quicker.
That way you get somebody notice, the property owner, and they've got notice, and they, and then you can move forward.
Tomorrow afternoon, I'm good.
And the next thing is, this overtime hours on the ambulance is absurd, it's unbelievable. You know, there's thirty days in the month of June, and they ran four hundred and fifty-four runs, that's fifteen point four runs a day. Are these people, is there, do we take them to the doctor, do we take them to the emergency room, or where did they go?
I don't know, we're taking them somewhere, ain't we?
Grocery, or the liquor store, or somewhere. I mean, it's, it's out of hand, overtime hours, sixteen hundred and fifty-eight scheduled overtime hours, and four hundred and fourteen unscheduled overtime hours. Two thousand seventy-two total, what does that come out in numbers?
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a man per year.
Did you change?
Two thousand forty hours.
Did you, did you do a change with, on that with, well, I can't think of these...
I think Kim and Jamie made a change on that.
Yeah, they came up with a change, I, you talked to me about, it was like...
Did it go for you or...
Was it implemented yet?
Scourge a lot first, they all switched to twenty-four hours.
I think it started with your new budget year.
So, we gotta see, we need to see how that's gonna work, Tom, I've talked...
I'm sorry, I'm done with that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I...
That's the first time you've ever apologized.
Well, it'll be the last two, boy.
I'm not saying that I apologize before.
All right, anybody else from council?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I'm gonna bring up, uh, to the council about defunding Main Street. Uh, I don't see the point of it right now, I mean, we're moving in a, you know, direction with the trail town, we got volunteers building, decorating, screws up Main Street, and it's a fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars, could go somewhere useful, like into the street, or, uh, paint, where our paint, where the building, where, you know, I think it's time for us, uh, broken our storefronts, and everything screws back up. But, uh, I would like for you guys to consider it.
Well, in order to do that, we would have to, uh, we would have to amend the budget, correct?
That's correct.
If you were going to defund it, because the budget's already been passed. Now, my feeling on it is, and, and I understand where Mr. Lewandowski's coming from, is that I don't think we need to defund it, I think we need to look at maybe reorganizing just a little bit on it, to try and make it more effective. And if I could find my paper here, which I've got right here, I'm gonna read you the bylaws on Main Street, and this is...
You know, I'm, I'm not, I have problems with, um, creating problems to cure a problem.
Yes, exactly.
And I've, I've thought about this a lot, Justin, and I, I just, I think there's a level of, uh, expectations and accountabilities that obviously has not been there, and I think as a mayor or whatever, then I think, I think that needs to happen.
Yeah.
And I think there's a process that, one, two, three, four, five, that needs to be done, and if those things aren't done by ever who, then you have some...
Right.
But, you know, I, I, yeah, I, I, I've thought about it a lot, I, I, I don't wanna create problems to fix problems.
Okay, so, right here's my deal on, on Main Street, totally, and then we're gonna get out of here after I open it up the floor, I think I got a few people back there that wanna say something. In item B, under purposes of a corporation, it plainly states that Main Street is to take remedial actions to eliminate the physical, economic, and social deterioration of said area, and thereby promote historic preservation and contribute to its community betterment while lessening the burdens of the Paintsville mun- municipal governments. That's the sole purpose of Main Street. Do I think it's been done in the past few years? No, I do not, but I think we can straighten it out.
Main Street does have a certification, which is not easy to...
That you may not get back for three years.
It may not be able to get back, and it was hard for us to obtain, and we need to keep Main Street to keep that certification.
Exactly.
Trails and towns coming in, that also will bring in more to the community, it's a different avenue, then it opens up and expands and gives us more possibilities.
Right.
We have in two years, to my understanding, is that the Main Street convention is gonna be held in Paintsville?
In twenty nineteen.
In twenty nineteen.
Yes.
That's in two years, that'll bring additional revenue and people downtown, that's what we need, we don't need to go ahead and say, okay, we're gonna do away with it because of...
I think it needs to be structured.
Our greatest mayor, we need to reorganize.
They can, yes, reorganize, we don't have to maintain it and keep it, we don't need to...
The bottom line is, it needs to be fixed.
Yes.
That's the bottom line.
You can't keep losing board members like we have, five at a time, and ready to fix it, so you're gonna have to do something, so.
That's true, yes, we fix the problem, just don't care.
We lost five, five major board members at one time, so, you know, nobody wants to fool with it, so, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna...
Yes, we are.
That's the one thing, you know, when we're not just working on a Saturday morning, you know, the Main Street director shouldn't be running free in our city hall. I mean, this is not right, I mean, we gotta fix it, that's all I gotta say.
Right.
Well, it's all right.
Okay, now, is there anything from the floor? Anybody from the floor? Mr. Coach Roger Belcher?
That's one abandoned properties on South Side. Uh, Tom, they need to be down, we're going up some of the, it's, properties need to be gone, the, the trees and stuff, uh, going up South Side, the, the mayor and even, even Bob on the years kept five, eight feet.
Mm-hmm.
We were cleared, that's not it, it's the overhang, uh, in about a year or so, on top of South Side, if you go back around, which now they call it South Side Lane, we're not gonna be able to get out there, something's not done, for the overgrowth, and it's all coming on those, there's six houses, four of them abandoned, and that's where all the overgrowth is, is, is coming from, is from those abandoned properties.
And correct me if I'm wrong here, Coach, there's snakes that, that those, the, a kid could get in one of those houses, and all of a sudden fall through a floor, or whatever, it, it's, it's a disaster up in there.
And there's, there're homeless up there going in and out, uh, one was burned down about two years ago from a meth lab, and it'd be caught on fire.
There's a needle.
Uh, exactly, and, uh, police don't be nothing, there's a lake, used to, they had to go and run them out, uh, never did catch them, in and out there doing meth, and something's gotta be done, 'cause they'll, they'll get out there and...
People are paying city taxes.
Yes, they are. They are paying city taxes, and they deserve to have something done. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, just last Thursday, there was a man passed out in the weeds, which T-Rex could hide up there, nobody could see him, and, uh, the state police...
Who, T-Rex?
Passed out, they had to call ambulance to come get him and take him to the emergency room, and then he had a warning, so they took him to jail, so there's one ambulance that we were talking about.
Freebie, freebie, I might add.
That in front of my house, my son comes over with a Westington and craves crossbow, which is not cheap, and the neighbors up the street cut the weeds, and it's not right.
You're exactly right.
No.
You're exactly right.
And there's a copperhead in my yard, my brother, they cut the grass.
One thing about this mayor right here, he's gonna clean this place up, that's what I promise you that.